...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, at this time I'll open up the floor to public comments. If anyone would like to speak. Mr. Elder, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
I'm good. Whatever you need, sir.
I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I hope each of you had a wonderful start to your new year. This evening, I received my copy of the Webster Herald and I got home and while reading through it, I noticed that the minutes of the village board meetings since October 2015 were printed on pages six and seven. This is somewhat unusual, though there have been some quick summaries of meetings printed in the Herald by the Webster Herald itself. It caught my eye that two pages of print were devoted to this effort. Over the last several meetings, I just don't recall a motion to approve the printing of the minutes of these board meetings. So how is the printing authorized? Who approved it? And why didn't the board approve it? Are we looking at yet another unilateral action here? Now, I assume that the printing has a fee associated with it, that it's not free. So that kind of begs the question, how much did the pages actually cost? Now, if these were ads, which is what I'm most familiar with, the cost would be at least $800. If it did cost the village money, I'm wondering what line item of the budget is the money being taken from? I would ask the trustees to look into this, because I just don't understand how space can be taken in the paper, especially if there's a cost, without your authorization. I know that's a lot of questions, but they are important ones. Actually, though, the most confusing part about this is that while providing the public with meeting information is always good, why is this being done now? The village has not cable cast its meeting for almost a year. The introduction to the printing is strange. It talks about the incongruity, which means in this case, strange timing of the posting on the village's website. But the postings are actually fairly timely. And just as a reminder, the board meetings, including workshops, are taped and they are available on YouTube. Finally, in closing tonight, on more or less somewhat sad note, I want to offer my condolences to Jake and Anna Swingley for the loss of her father. I hope you'll join me in praying for their comfort and their time in grieving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elder. We do echo your sentiments with respect to the Swingley family. Ironically, I just had a conversation with Joseph regarding those pages. I have no idea why they're in there. They should not be in there. I did not authorize them to be put into the paper. And the comment I made to Joseph was, we most certainly are not going to be paying for that. And I'm pretty sure nobody else on this board authorized those minutes to be posted. There's absolutely no reason for those to be in that paper at all.
Okay.
Has anybody called?
I will be talking to Anna first thing in the morning. I assure you of that.
Okay.
Hello, Eric Reynolds. So tonight I have a couple things I wanted to speak about. One is the Brittany Woods development that is being planned and looked at, and also the rezoning of that area on the corner of Phillips Road and Ridge. So originally, so in the comprehensive plan, that is listed as an open space. I don't know why it hasn't been taken over as an open space, that it hasn't been purchased, but it is an open space. The problem that I have with it is the developers come in and told us that it's an urban setting. We're still a suburban setting. We don't need LEs. We don't need, I don't think we need more apartment buildings, but that's his business. But the manner in which it's proposed to be thrown in there is kind of odd. Secondly, in order to facilitate that, there's been a request for a zoning change. A zoning change on that particular property is spot zoning, which is not illegal, is not legal to, and that was proven down on Lion Drive when we tried to have that, have an overlay district put on that property. There's no surrounding area that is RM, so it doesn't really make sense to make that RM. Additionally, as a PUD, the board has much more flexibility in what they can authorize in that area. So I request that the board consider that very closely. Another thing that I noticed on the agenda just tonight is that you're planning on making an appointment to the Planning Board of Sherri Lacata that's not subject to board approval. I haven't seen that done before, and I'm wondering why you're doing that in this case. Typically, the board would be approving an appointment to the Planning Board.
That's the law, sir.
Well, I understand it's the law, but what is the, why would you not have some sort of vote so that the board has some sort of input into that? I mean, this person is supposedly going to be representing all the people, but only you are putting her there. It seems like everyone else on the board should have a little bit of input into that since they are representing the rest of the people in the village. So I think it's just odd that you are one of the only mayors around in the last years.
Well, that's absolutely a false statement.
Eric, that's what the state statute allows for.
I'm sorry, Mr. White. I'm sorry. I didn't ask you a question?
Well, I'm trying to explain the legal basis for why the mayor has the ability to appoint-
But you're not, you're not the board, and I'm talking to the board. Well, he is an attorney, so he knows what he's talking about.
Okay, well, if you want to-
He's affirming the statement that I just made you, sir.
I'm sorry.
So you can disagree all you want, and that's fine. I respect that, okay? I'm citing to you the law, and he is affirming to you the law, okay? You disagree, that's fine. That's no problem whatsoever. In respect to the other statement-
If you want to ask Mr. White to interject, that's up to you.
What was completely false was when you made a statement that this proposed zoning change is illegal because it's spot zoning, that is absolutely incorrect. You are wrong, okay?
It's not spot zoning.
It is spot zoning, okay?
And it will, I'm sure it'll get challenged.
Okay, well, that's fine. It can get challenged. That's okay.
Are you done interrupting me, or can I say something?
Who's cracking you? Make sure the correct information's out there, sir. That's all.
Are you done interrupting? Thank you. So if you would like Mr. White to speak, you can certainly ask him to speak. But in other words, he's not part of the board.
He is our attorney. I will also affirm that. He is our attorney.
That's correct.
He's a licensed attorney, and he does know what he's talking about, sir.
Well, that is not my question. The question is whether he should interject and interrupt while I'm speaking, without you asking him to.
Your time's up, sir. Have a good night.
I certainly will, John.
Richard Walter, 20 Elm Street, Webster New York. First of all, I'd like to thank the attorney and the mayor for their rudeness. My question tonight, I have several things I'd like to cross about. The first thing is the out-and-out lie the mayor stated at the last meeting, that he has never stated that he would like to do away with the village. I'd like to him to recall a conversation or a yelling match where he out in the parking lot after a meeting four years ago screamed very loudly as he walked across the parking lot, screamed several times that he was going to do away with the village. This, of course, was before he got to be mayor. Apparently, now things have changed. I'd also like to make a small clarification on the statements he made. Where he stated that I had requested that they do a bond issue for the towers. I did not say that I requested a ban, a bond anticipation note. I did not mention anything about doing a bond issue. So all your great speech about how much it would cost to do a bond issue is nice information, but it didn't pertain to the subject. So I'd like to make that clear. And the other question I have, well, on that same subject, he stated that I was going to be causing, if they did do a bond issue for the new cell tower, that I would be causing a great deal of tax or expense to the taxpayers. I submit that the entire cost of having to put up a new tower was an issue that the mayor and his board caused when they decided to do away with the water and not do any negotiations with the county as to take the standard deal. If the mayor had negotiated, we may not have to be spending $300,000, give or take, to put up a tower, and the taxpayers would not have the burden, whether it's out of revenues coming in from the tower. We would have those continuing revenues and would not be losing this money out of that. Mayor's negotiations also caused us on this water issue to still be paying for a water tank relining that we never have had use of since Monroe County took over the system. So we are having now, because of the great negotiating capabilities of the mayor and the standard deal, paying for a tower that we shouldn't have had to pay for. We're paying for a water tank relining that the county should be paying for because they're the ones gathering the revenues from the water system now. I would like to say that the mayor is a car salesman's dream. When he goes in to buy a car, not only does he insist upon paying sticker, but I'm sure when he trades in his car, if there's still payments left on him, he gives them the car and keeps the payments for himself, like he's done with the old water tower in the state room. Now, the only question I have tonight is, with the rising sewer fees and a very small reduction in taxes, I know my house, I pay 50% more to the village now than I did four years ago, between water costs and the sewer fees. Why, after the mayor brought in people to discuss solar energy at the well field, have we not done anything, or have we done anything? Nothing has been heard on that in a long time? Why are we not looking into this in the court of justice?
Mr. Walter, your time is up, sir.
Let me finish my statement. This is my five minutes.
You're done, sir. Your five minutes are up. You're done.
Thank you very much, sir.
Have a good evening, sir. Anyone else this evening? All right. At this point, we will move into village board business. And the first thing we have up is a resolution of approved minutes of the village board meeting workshop of December 22nd. Questions, anyone? Would it be possible going forward to include Will's minutes, or his report that he generates, that one-page report? Yeah, I'm just saying in the minutes. Is it worth putting it in there or not? Does it stay up on the website always, or does it come down? Because I thought the package came down.
Packs come down and get replaced by the minutes, but the minutes are what we talked about.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to ask a question. All right. I'll entertain a motion in a second to accept the minutes of December 22nd.
I'll second.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Motion passed.
Mayor Cato?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next, we have the village board workshop of January 3rd minutes. Daryl, do you want to read that, Eric?
Sure. Nice to have all the boards together that night.
Yes, it was.
I was a little bit late for this, but I'll read through board business. Peter Adams, chairman of the planning board, gave a brief overview of Brittany Woods Townhomes property and discussed the current rezoning as a PDU, and then referred to the proposed rezoning residential multiple, which would facilitate the use of the property for development of single and two-story multifamily garden, low-rise townhome in the community of up to 70 units. Mr. Jack Buholtz, senior project manager, presented preliminary concept site plan with the proposed project, and introduced Mr. Mark Van Epp's project developer and attorney Scott Settleit.
Zedelman.
Zedelman?
Zedelman. Thanks, please.
Thank you. They discussed the renderings and proposal in detail and answered questions fielded by the members of all boards. The village board will continue to discuss the proposed project at the next board meeting, which is tonight, to determine secret for rezoning and to set a date for public hearing.
Thank you, Trustee Byers. Anybody have any questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the January 3rd workshop.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Mayor Cato?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next up is warrants and claims. I did review the bills, as did Trustee Byers. Does anybody else have any questions this evening?
The Carol Clem article, $780? Is that the normal number?
That's for several articles.
Yeah, it's like a quarter.
Okay, all right.
It's per quarter.
I don't remember seeing that before. Okay.
I'm just saying, it's more than that per quarter. That was for, I think, ten papers.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion in a second to pay the bills.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cato?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next is a resolution to set a public hearing regarding the adoption of local law number one of 2017 to amend the village zoning map and zoning ordinance to rezone certain lands from PUD, which is planned unit development, to RM residential multiple. Questions? Are we all here for the joint meeting? No? Got anyone? All right. I'll read down through this. And whereas pursuant to New York Village Law, sections 7-702 and 7-706, the board trustees has a power to adopt and amend the zoning ordinance and to include a map adopted in connection with such amendment. And whereas the board has been presented with and has introduced a draft local law titled "A Local Law to Amendment Zoning Map to Rezone Two Parcels of Land from PUD to RM with Respect to Certain Lands Located at 1419 Ridge Road in Webster." Whereas a public hearing is required to respect to said proposed local law and zoning map amendment. Pursuant to section 20 of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York and village law section 7-706 of the state of New York, a public hearing on said proposed local law number one of 2017 shall be held on the ninth day of February 2017 at 7:30 PM at the Community Meeting Hall, 29 South Avenue, Webster, New York. And that notice of the time and place of such hearing describing in general terms the proposed amended local law be published once and/or before the 26th day of January 2017. It will be published in Webster Herald, which is the official newspaper of the village of Webster and a newspaper of general circulation of said village of Webster. So at this time, I will make a motion to set a public hearing regarding the adoption of local law number one, 2017, to amend the village's zoning map and zoning ordinance to rezone certain lands from PUD to RM.
I'll second the motion.
You did the first?
I did, too, Ben.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Cato?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Motion passed.
So next, we have a resolution of the board of trustees regarding, it's our notice of intent to serve as lead agency under SE SECRA. Anybody want to read through this, or? No? All right. I'll read through it. Thank you. All right. Whereas Mark Van Epp's and Brittany Wood Townhomes LLC has requested the rezoning of a 13.4 acre site located at 1419 Ridge Road within the village of Webster, Monroe County, the state of New York, to facilitate the development of single and two-story multifamily townhomes of up to 80 units. And whereas in accordance with the provisions of 6 NYCRR, Part 617, the board trustees of the village of Webster intends to serve as lead agency for the State Environmental Quality Review Act, otherwise known as SECRA. Review of this unlisted action and in the capacity, in that capacity, will determine if their proposed action will have a significant effect on the environment, and whereas the lead agency will undertake a coordinated review of this action. Now therefore be it resolved. The village of Webster Board of Trustees hereby designates its intention to serve as lead agency for the SECRA coordination review of this unlisted action and will circulate a lead agency notice, the application for the rezoning, and long-form environmental assessment formed to all involved and interested agencies, who will then have 30 days from the mailing of the lead agency notice to object to the board of trustees' lead agency designation. So at this time, I will entertain a motion and a second regarding the resolution of the board of trustees' intent to serve as lead agency under SECRA.
I'll second it.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cato?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item number five on the agenda. It's my honor to designate Chris Crowe, how do you pronounce that wrong?
Crayway.
Crayway. As chairperson to the planning board for a term ending in July of 2017. And I face this recommendation of a retiring chairperson, a man who I have a great amount of admiration and respect for, and that's a man that acted as chair for years and served on the planning board for 20-plus years at Mr. Peter Adams. So I'll entertain a motion in a second for that designation.
I'll make that presentation.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Mayor Cato?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I'm going to announce the appointment of Sherri Lacata to the planning board for a term ending in July of 2017. For those of you, I did include an email that Sherri sent over expressing her interest, and I'm fairly certain that positively she'll do a very good job on the planning board. As you know, she works very well, lives next door to June, so she'll do a great job.
I do have a concern. I do hope that this appointment is different than the one that she gave to her in 2015 when she was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Board for the year, and I believe that she never met you. So it is my hope that her attendance and her participation will be different than others.
And if I remember correctly, that was-
Also Patty?
Thanks. Well, she didn't get appointed because of two other people, but I don't think you're going to be disappointed in her attendance and, you know, involvement on the planning board whatsoever, okay? Okay, next, we have the discussion regarding town supervisor Ron Nesbit's response to Trustee Byers' letter of June 24th. And we've had a number of discussions regarding that. And the board was willing to meet, I believe six months ago, willing to meet with the town, but they did have the condition that they wanted a response from supervisor, or a response from the town regarding Trustee Byers' letter to the town. It was specifically sent to Kathy Tenia and Karen Buck, the copy to the supervisor. Everybody was mailed a copy of this letter, and I did, it was in several times this week, and I noticed that nobody had picked up their letter. So I opened, I took mine, I scanned it and emailed it to everybody, because I wanted to have an opportunity to read the letter in advance of the meeting. And, you know, without going through, reading the entire letter, I think that, you know, the second to the last paragraph pretty much indicates that, you know, the town board would like to sit down with us and have a conversation regarding public access to television. And quite frankly, I think it's, you know, we're one community, we're one Webster, and I think that we should at least sit down and have that discussion. That's where, you know, I've had this position for six months, and I think it's in the best interest of the entire Webster community and the village that we do sit down, and if we have some differences, we discuss them. And the letter has addressed a number of your issues, Trustee Byers, and-
It addressed none of them. May I speak?
May I speak? May I speak?
Well, as soon as I'm done, you can.
Okay.
All right? So... Excuse me? So if you have differences and we sit down, Mr. Miles, if you can't control yourself, all right? I'd appreciate it.
Go ahead, John, go ahead.
Okay, if you can't control yourself,
I'd appreciate it if you leave.
Okay? So, you know, as indicated, there seems to be some differences in, you know, as far as the monies go. And I understand that, okay? You have a position, they have a position, all right? The bottom line is, the Webster residents, you know, do not have access to, you know, or are able to view on Channel 12 our village board meetings. And while some of the younger people may, you know, watch, you know, the meetings strained or through Yahoo, you know, I think we're doing a disservice to our residents by not having cable access channel available to air our meetings. That's my opinion, and I see absolutely nothing wrong with sitting down and having a conversation, trying to work out a contract with the town of Webster over this.
Are you done?
Yes, sir, I am.
Let me give you a little history on this. This letter, which is not open, was sent and was placed in our mailboxes on Friday. The mayor was wrong in terms of several times coming in because at 4:30 on Monday afternoon, 4:30 Monday afternoon, Joe Neal was directed to send out a change in the agenda for this meeting. And she did so. She attached the change, which had here a discussion regarding Supervisor Nesbit's response to Trustee Byers' letter regarding cable access television. This letter was not open. The only one who opened the letter and was aware of it because we were not into the office was the mayor. At 7:47 that evening, the mayor copied in the office, using the scanner, the letter, and emailed it to the board. So that when I read my emails that evening, 7:43 to be exact, it was sent out, 7:56, I read that there was an agenda item with a letter that was addressed to me and going to be discussed. And I hadn't even read it. I hadn't approved it at all. And if you do read the letter, it starts out, "Honorable Darryl Byers, Village of Webster, Dear Trustee Byers," as you go down through, he talks to me about concerns that he had. Second to the third to last paragraph, Mr. Byers, you go on the skate. And then at the end, it says, "I look forward to hearing from you." This letter was expressly directed to me. It was copied to the village board, it was copied to the town board, and it was copied to the attorney for the town, not even to the attorney for the village. Okay? And it was put on an agenda by the mayor, unilateral, for discussion before I even had the opportunity to know that the letter was there. I wholeheartedly disagree with the fact that you unilaterally do things without asking. This is a letter not directed to this board for discussion. Would I discuss it with people on the board? Quite possibly. But your actions, Mr. Mayor, are sort of reprehensible.
Well, Trustee Byers, I'm going to disagree with you once again.
Oh, of course you will.
Because the letter mailed to each of us...
And now, I'm not necessarily done, sir. Excuse me.
Okay, it was, that's a fact. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. The letter, if you do read it through, does not address the issue that I sent to Kathy Teney and to Karen Buck and copied to the supervisor. What I sent to them is available in the back. I looked at the agreement that was made in 1986 between the Cable Access Commission and the town and the village. I also saw in their Code 10, Chapter 10, the same verbiage. However, in their local law, or their law, Code 11, that they passed in May, they got rid of the defunct, no longer existing Cable Access Commission. It was now called the Cable Access or the Cable 12 TV Department, whatever. In that, the only thing I asked for, I asked for clarification on what the percent was that the board, the village board in the village should reimburse the town. What is the percentage? We were billed at 11.9% year after year after year from at least 1986, excuse me, until the current time. And what it states is this, "The village will reimburse the town for their share of costs incurred by the Cable Access Commission proportionally to the most recent quarterly franchise fee revenue received by the village to the total received by the village and town." That is a percentage of what we get, approximately $40,000, to what the town gets, approximately $560,000 to $600,000. You take that, that percent, and that's what we should be paying in reimbursement to whatever their costs are. Not 11.9% year after year because it changes. So I asked for clarification. Now, is that clarified in this letter that came back from the supervisor? No. He states in here that you used revenue that was in the paper that the town puts out for their yearly budget. And that's an estimate. But did he address in here what the actual costs were in comparison? No, he did not. He went on to talk about how we, all the other costs that are involved in this that apparently we're not paying for. And then, very interesting because he does say, enter into a new legal contract. Our cable, our contract is done. We have no contract with the town for cable at all. And that would in fact save the village about $11,000 where we could probably broadcast our own for maybe $3,000 to $4,000.
And not through cable access TV?
Not through cable access, that's correct. And those people who have satellite, which it's a growing number that have satellite, and those that have the smart TV, I believe the only thing you can buy on the market now is a smart TV where you have access to things like YouTube, et cetera. And if we had streaming, they would be able to see that. So...
If they have those TVs.
If they have internet, that's right. But that's another issue. The issue at hand that I submitted to the town back in June and now just received a reply to, which didn't even really address the issue, is what is it based on? Give me your numbers. What is the percent here?
I think he mentions without specific numbers in paragraph three. If I could interject, if you don't mind.
No, you can do that.
In checking over your numbers in regards to how much the town has charged the Village of Webster according to 1986 agreement, they didn't include numbers regarding the town side of the ledger. Didn't, they didn't charge for pension costs, workforce compensation, healthcare costs, retirement costs, payroll and invoicing processing, human resources. So when you, what he's saying is, when you put your numbers together, you didn't include those, okay? So there's obviously a disagreement with respect to the 11.9%, all right? And what we're paying and what they feel should have been included, which were not included. And the 1986 agreement, nowhere in there does it say that they're going to come in and provide videotaping in other village meetings. So, you know, I still believe that, you know, a lot of people in this village, because there isn't, obviously, the demographics of the village is changing, but there still are a lot of people that do watch the meetings on cable access. And I think it warrants a discussion with the town board. We are one community. They do have this service. They've been providing it to the Village Webster residents for decades. And, you know, I think we do a detriment, it's detrimental to our residents by not at least being willing to sitting down and having a conversation with the town of Webster. You know, we're one community. I think that, you know, we should act accordingly. Because I think it's in the best interest of the residents in the long run. That's my opinion.
And according to Town Supervisor Nesbit, the cost is about $216 per meeting to do the taping, to do the editing, two people here to do the editing.
Right.
And put it up on. So that would equal about $5,188 per year. Would I be willing to pay that? Yes. But what about $11,000? $13,000 we paid in 2015. If it's a matter of paying someone to come in here, tape it, go edit it, put it on Channel 12, there it is, spelled out right there. That's what I would pay.
Can I interject just for a second?
Sure.
There's two separate issues here.
I know.
The issue that you initially inquired about was what should the village, is the village paying its correct proportionate share for the programming on Channel 12? That goes in the future because people in the village, if you get cable, you get Channel 12. And the village gets cable revenue. So it's only fair that the village, you know, use some of its cable franchise fees to reimburse the town for their programming on Channel 12, exclusive of village board meetings. The cost and how village board meetings get broadcast, that's a whole separate issue.
Right.
You know, so, and then your comment that...
But I'll go back...
Well, wait, just one second.
I...
Just one second. And you say that the agreement, we no longer have a contract, the village no longer has a contract with the town to reimburse it, for the reimbursement of the cable fees. I don't think that's true. The contract is, the Cable Access Commission didn't sign the contract. The contract is between the village. It was signed by Mayor John Bill.
John Bill.
And the town of Webster, signed by Supervisor Stanton. So the contract, and the contract talks about...
Cable Access Commission?
Well, I know that. But it talks about reimbursing, it talks about...
Their share of the cost?
No, it says, intend to use these franchise fees to reimburse the Webster Cable Access Commission for their costs. Now, I don't know what their costs are, but they didn't have any employees at the time. Because any employees were of the town of Webster. But I believe the thought was, is for whatever their costs were to run a studio and do all that programming, will get shared proportionately. They still have, even though there's no Webster Cable Access Commission, there's still those costs. So you could argue that, you know, I think there's an argument that it's still a valid contract. And I agree with you. I don't think, Supervisor Nesbit's letter did not address your issues at all.
No. My issue, my basic issue that I wanted answered was, 11.9% does not seem to work out with what they have as the...
You're absolutely right.
And that's what I want answered. That's the only thing I've asked for.
Well, you're absolutely right, and it should. You know, unless their costs and the revenues are identical year after year after year, that cost, you know, the reimbursement should fluctuate. And it hasn't fluctuated since however long they've been doing 11.9%.
And that is addressed on page two.
Well...
It was an assumption with respect to the 11.9%. It's not correct, I agree.
Well, whose assumption was it?
It was the assumption of their finance director in the preceding one and then the subsequent one. And I think we're all, we're all on the same page as far as that goes. Right? That, on two issues, right? Number one, the assumption is incorrect as far as 11.9%. And the second, to Darryl's point, that the specifics with respect to what is actually supposed to be billed was not outlined in the letter, right?
But the second, the second part, he's saying that that, that the 11.9% includes the cost for broadcasting village board meetings. That's what they're saying. And that's why they bumped it up to 11.9% to include the cost. But they never talked to the village about that. I don't know if the village ever agreed to that. And it was just some assumption by, you know, Paul Adams was the finance director before Kathy Teney. I suppose we could ask Paul Adams. They'll probably tell you that, I don't know, somebody told us it was 11.9%, so we just did a bill.
Right.
You know?
Well, that's just more validates my point that we should sit down at boards and have a discussion about it.
Well, I agree with you, but perhaps that shouldn't happen until you get some actuals response to Darryl's first letter. You know, let's see. You know, it's fine to say that Darryl was using, you know, projected franchise fees. Well, tell us what the actual revenue was. That's not hard to do. Give us those. And give us what your costs were, too. And then you can talk about, then you can talk about whether the costs should include... I would argue that it doesn't, shouldn't include some of the stuff he's got in here because I don't know how you're going to, you know, he's got payroll and invoice processing. What the heck is that? And how are you going to break that out? Well, how are you going to break that out to, you know, what percentage should be for the village? What, his cost for sending one bill? What, he wants to include the cost of a stamp or something? That's kind of crazy.
Well, that's what I... I looked at workers' comp today for our village. And it was, if we take 6% or 7% of that, it turned out to be $300 and some dollars. And then I looked at, you know, a couple of other things. And the total of, you take the actual percentage. I'd like to know what the percentage is. And then if you want to apply some of these other things,
Right.
let's do that and add it up as percentage.
Right.
Correct.
Percentage of time, an eight-hour day, that's about an hour.
If he's going to say there's some stuff that they haven't charged for, that they want to charge for, okay, break it up. Tell us, tell the village how much you want to charge. And then give us the right numbers for the franchise fee. Do we know what the village's franchise fees were? You can do the calculations even at their best-case scenario, including everything that the supervisor wants included. Is it still 11.9%? I guess it's probably still be less than the 11.9%. But that's a separate issue. Then you can talk about, all right, what do you want to charge for broadcasting the village board meetings? You know, Ron's, his number only, you know, he only took Darryl's number. Darryl thought, you know, the village was being overcharged by the $25,000. So it was, it was the supervisor's way of saying, well, we're not going to pay you $25,000 because we never charged you for broadcasting village board meetings. And, you know, if we break it out, it's $200 a meeting, and we think that's fair, so let's just call it even. Well, all right, that's fine for the past, but let's talk about going forward. You know, if you want to call it, you know, even for the past, that's probably the best thing to do.
Right.
But what are you going to charge us? If you want to do it, what are you going to charge us in the future? I don't know if it's $219. What are their actual costs?
That was a guess.
You know, I thought, and maybe I'm wrong.
I assumed that one was the $5,000 split by 24.
Right.
He took that 25, he divided by 11, and then divided...
But I assume some of the people helping with the broadcasting are volunteers. They're not, they're not paid employees.
No, they're all, they're all, they're all paid.
I think they are all paid.
They're all paid?
I think they are.
Well, are they full-time or part-time?
One's full, one's part.
Alright, so a part-time person, I'm sure they're not paying benefits too, so a lot of his costs.
It could be. Carrie's full-time, she definitely gets benefits.
The whole thing is, this got brought up in June and we're getting this finally in January and it still doesn't have any information in it. That's kind of.
So there's, you know, it's two separate issues. You can meet with the, meet with the town and just talk about broadcasting village board meetings. Forget about, and don't talk about this because, you know, it's a separate issue and they don't, I don't think you have enough information to really have a conversation with, with the town about, you know? So you don't necessarily have to have, you know, tie them together.
I think one meeting discussing both would be sufficient.
If you have enough information, if you have enough information.
And tells me what the cost is. I mean, they can't do it since June. Seriously.
You want to follow Darryl or you want me to follow?
I will respond to him in that I would like more specific information.
Okay.
Dealing with the issue that I brought up.
Okay.
And that's what this says anyways. It was looking for my response, not a discussion with the board.
Exactly.
And certainly not one where you put it out on the agenda prior to my even seeing it. Still object to that. You can put your mail out.
You can object all you want, Darryl, I heard you the first time, the second time, the third time, I disagree with you, I put it out there so that everybody had a copy of it. It was mailed to me, it wasn't mailed to me, it was actually handed to me and it was mailed to everybody else. Okay? So you can object, understand all you might.
So if you see a CC just copied and it really goes to someone else, you can do whatever you want, right? Interesting.
When I get a letter mailed to me, Darryl, I'm going to open it and I'm going to read it.
It was mailed because it was CC to the entire board.
Doesn't matter. It came to me, I opened it.
Open and read it, but did you put it on the agenda?
Yes, I did.
Before I even read it?
Darryl, I emailed it to you because you never picked it up, okay? That's it.
Didn't need to go on the agenda.
Darryl, we're done, alright?
Yeah, we are.
John, do you have anything?
Maybe you are.
Uh, no, I don't.
Counting overtime? Jake's not here, so. I don't think you're going to answer any questions on that. Nobody has anything else? Entertain a motion and a second, please close the meeting.
Take the motion.
Trustee Del Kane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.